Hello, Dan Pepper.
I now call the Akamak County School Board meeting to order that we all stay in place. I place my patience to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Sun.
Present.
Mr. Taylor.
Present.
Dr. Johnson.
Present.
Here.
Dr. Holden.
Here.
Mr. White.
Present.
Dr. Holden.
Present.
First slide, margin, fifth point, oh, one, out of the document. Has anyone signed that? Since no one signed up to the expense of the review. I have two, three, four, oh, one. Approval of the minutes. We have opportunity to review the minutes. Were there any questions there? Here, none by unanimous consent will declare the minutes approved. I have four, four, oh, one, budget transfers.
Good evening. I've attached the budget transfers. And just, I had to put money into categories. The category two was up because of an increased foreign teachers and those fees. But remember, we saved that in retirement and the actual salary cost. Physical services also had to pay half of the first year of the Brown Edwards auditors overages. And we, this is the first year that our psychological services took the mental health counselors out of the title program and it was in, in operating. So that's why that is up. And then people transportation is up because of the cost of diesel fuel.
Any questions? All right. Could I have a motion to approve?
I have not motioned that we approve the budget transfers.
Second.
It's moved to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Next slide is the approval of the vouchers. We have opportunity to review the vouchers. Were there any questions or concerns? Hearing none by unanimous consent will declare the vouchers approved. Item six, point, oh, one, is the third reading of the drug policy. Are there any questions?
Well, my question is the same as it was our last meeting. And I guess I would like to know, in what scenario would we use that policy? In what scenario would a student bring drugs to school and then there not be a punishment?
If I use card. The only scenario that we can think of, because it's up to the board whether we do anything or not. We have not had any situations where a student will bring drugs to school and they don't do anything. I, when they do these policies, they do them for non-physical, for all of the state part, under ESB. So some other school divisions might choose not to do anything, but we would not do that. However, we follow the policy. That would be an option. I don't know if it would be something like someone brought a, not an inhaler, but one of the pens, EpiPens or something like that, it is considered a drug and we didn't know about it. And they used it and something happened, so we're not doing anything for that stimulus. But we would follow what we're, we normally do. And we have no excuses for drugs, no tolerance for drugs.
What, what the policy does is, is it would like to review the case itself.
We would always still bring the pa, bring the person to the board. And the board would have to just make that decision based on the circumstances.
Because it doesn't really talk about, it says controlled substances, imitation controlled substances, marijuana.
And, and that's the one thing, like, we've had people who bring oregano to school as a look-alike drug and they might not be given a long-term suspension and things like that. But we would still always bring that person to the board.
And would there be a situation where they would not be brought to the board? Would there, would there be a situation where the principal would decide, well, I don't think this is...
No. As long as we find out about it, then we bring them to board. That's one thing that I always say, we bring them to board. We're not going to make that decision because it's not a decision that we want to make. We don't want to set a precedent for that. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, do I have a motion to approve?
I motion to approve policy six, point, oh, one.
Second.
Moved to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, seven, point, oh, one, is the first reading. It's the policy that educated, the model policy that gave me the State Department of Education. If you have a question, you should contact Central Office next weekend. We'll be having a report after next week. All right. Eight, point, oh, one, financial report.
I have my financial report. Things are progressing. We still appear to be going to meet our goals and not lose any money. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. You see that we're catching up on the reimbursements and getting them more up to date. And I believe from our projections, everything should be met. Okay, I don't know if, if this is when we want to discuss the ERP option. But I do have the latest proposal attached and the scope of work. We have checked with, and we discussed this at the last meeting to say that we wouldn't be bringing it up tonight. We have checked references, we have grilled references, we have called additional meetings with the company to ask them how they would address certain issues. We have gotten straight with the company in our pricing that we don't just want virtual training, we want a hybrid of hands-on and a computer lab training as well as virtual training. And we've even added a component, excuse me, which is called AMS, Application Managed Services, which gives us a person who maybe has four clients that is a power school expert that's at our disposal for a period of about a year and a quarter. So if we do both of these that I submitted to you today, we are still under budget and the annual recurring cost is under budget as well. They also feel like that we might not need to have, have those three systems analyst positions. But we're holding on to them right now in case we get into it and we see that something's changed. We also found out that they have, from calling one of the references, that we don't have a Virginia users group that we can use as a resource. But there's something called Snug, which is something, users group. And they're having a conference in October. So we're, we're pretty excited about this. We feel like it's not too much, like overkill, like we don't have to do time, time entry and all the budgeting documents, but it, it more or less, more or less fits us. So we're excited about going ahead. The timeline is that we would go live in July 1st of 24. Because we want to go live on when our fiscal year starts for our general ledger purposes. As far as payroll purposes, it is not a problem to submit two W2s at the end of the year for, for all employees. So that's why we've chosen July 1st of 2024 as our go-live date. That gives us this entire year to get everything up and running. And it also will be in well before the closing of our legacy system.
Right, and we're saying give you an opportunity also to run two systems.
We will run concurrently. They will keep the, the legacy system going into 25. So this puts us in front actually and well prepared for success, which I've stressed and stressed to them that this must be successful, so.
If we did it for six months, we could at least.
We, the timeline is, is well ahead of what the other proposed timeline. The other proposed timeline was eighteen to twenty-four months and hasn't started yet. Our timeline is starting now, September 1st, if, if you all approve this tonight.
Any questions?
This is time of attendance. This is paid remotely.
This is an ERP system. It's going to be budgeting, finance, HR, PR, general ledger. And, and it will interface with our frontline such that, you know, substitute management, frontline is used for substitute management and absence management. So it's going to be an all-inclusive system.
So would it interface with the current substitute program or...?
Yes. Now, they offer their own called Smart Find Express. And that might be something that we go to eventually, but it can upload a flat file, our CSV file from frontline, from which it'll pay substitutes and it'll record teacher absences. So there will be no more triple entry of that. We chose to, to delay Smart Find at least for a year because that involves training all the teachers and 400-plus users who are already trained on frontline. And frontline will work and has worked in the two references that we spoke to. They were using frontline. So that will continue to work. So it's not saying we won't go to that. But it's, it's Talended, which we're on now, is part of this program. So employees will be onboarded through Talended and it automatically populates the HR PR system and follows them throughout. So there won't be all, it prints contracts. It, it will do what, three different databases as far as HR PR. It'll do what three different databases will do. Now, you create a requisition and from that, a purchase order could be printed. It doesn't quite have the three-way match that we wanted, but I think we can work around that. But it'll be electronic signatures of purchase orders. It'll go through the system. We're really excited about it. It's not overly involved, some of them can be.
Yeah, this is truly a major step to have a fully integrated system. And without duplication, you can get access, if once it's up and running, access great information, any information you want and it's just over one database.
Completely online portal for employees to check their leave, to check when they took leave. Not longer, it'll be thirty days behind because of the paper trail.
Can they submit leave and not have to use the phone email to get it back?
Submit, they can submit leave. This leave will be submitted electronically.
So would they be able to go back, say, and look at pension, which six months ago?
Yes, they can. They can get their own employment verifications for mortgage purposes. Or, you know, just a number of little things that, that add up.
So make the teachers' lives a blur too.
It makes everybody's life a blur.
So we're really excited about this. We're set for success.
All right, do you have a motion to approve?
I motion that we move forward with the power school management system.
Second.
It's moved to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is brief?
Yes.
Okay, we'll start tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, next is the bus bids.
And I think I've, I've sent that out to you. If you could approve that. We did receive bids on four buses. But since that time, we rece, you know how it goes. If nobody bids on the bus, you pay a dollar more, the minimum. We have sold the remaining buses.
Okay.
So all buses, once you approve this tonight, will be sold. And I have another, if you look at the sealed, I think it's a sealed bid. That's, remember, we said we were going to do the buses first because we had people and buyers ready. And these are the other items that we would like to have declared surplus so that we can do a sealed bid on those as well.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the buses?
I motion that we approve the bus bids.
Second.
It's moved to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion now to put these other items up in?
I motion that we go ahead and put our other items up there.
Second.
It's moved to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay.
School, we have to.
Good evening. I just want to give a quick school health update on the data that was given to the Division Department of Education on nursing staff, chronic illnesses, medications, and encounters. I also want to go over the grants that we received and what we received with those last year. So basically, our school health staff last year, we had a total of four registered nurses with associate's degrees. We had six with bachelor's degrees. And we actually had three nurses last year that became nationally certified school nurses. We had two licensed LPNs, seven certified nursing assistants, and three unlicensed assistant personnel. The chronic illnesses that they've got was asthma, this one. We had a total of 649 students with asthma. Out of those, we had 236 that actually came with their own medication and an asthma action care plan. The rest covered under the new legislation that we had albuterol, stock albuterol with a standing order. We gave 177 emergency albuterol medications. And we also gave 17 from the staff, albuterol. Diabetes was the second one. We have a total of 12 type one students with diabetes. And we have a total of eight with type two. All of them came with the management plan. Four of those students had insulin pumps and five of those have continuous blood glucose monitoring. As far as life-threatening allergies or anaphylaxis, we had a total of 136 students diagnosed with life-threatening allergies. Out of those, 66 had an allergy action care plan. The rest were covered under the standing order and the EpiPens that we keep on hand, that supplies from Akamak County Schools. And then the, the last one was adrenal insufficiency. And we only have one student in the county that has that. Some of the level of care required by students, we had three that required daily nutrition through a G2 bar J2. One of the students that required a colostomy care. Three students with an intracranial shunt. Twenty-nine with a heart condition and five diagnosed with cancer. As far as concussion management, this, they were, the student, 67 were screened for suspected concussion. Thirty-six students were referred to a healthcare provider. And 27 actually received return to learn and play accommodation. So here's some interesting numbers on our health office visits. And I did them by registered nurse license, practical nurses, and then our unlicensed, unlicensed assistant personnel. So the encounters for RNs, there were 14,040 students that were actually seen by an RN. Out of those, 11,559 were actually returned to class. So we're keeping kids in school. 2,468 were sent home and 13 911 calls. As far as the LPNs, we had 1,513 that were seen by an LPN. 1,130 of those went back to class. 376 were sent home and there were three 911 calls. And with our unlicensed, unlicensed assistant personnel, we had 7,781 encounters seen. 6,654 were returned to class. And they had a total of three 911 calls. Medication administration, this can be anything from our albuterol, EpiPens, our medicines by mouth. We administer 17,408 daily medications. And we administered 2,871 over-the-counter medication. So that's it on the data that was shared with the Virginia Department of Ed. They also, we also had two grants. One was the school-based health grant. And with that, we had a full-time licensed practical nurse. It was for one year. And she assisted the school health coordinator with tracking COVID and other illnesses in the school. She also distributed COVID tests. And in addition, she covered clinics when full-time staff was not available. Each one of our schools received brand-new AEDs. Eleven nurses received the National Association of School Nursing membership for one year. And actually, five nurses qualified to apply and take the nationally certified school nurse exam. In order to qualify to take that exam, you must have your bachelor's degree and be a school nurse for at least five years. And out of that five, we had three that are now nationally certified as school nurses. And I want to congratulate Heidi Shreves, Cheryl Lafferty, and myself for giving that, that title. Then the second grant, we received a full-time registered nurse that was a float nurse that assisted in covering clinics when nursing was out. She also assisted with COVID as well. We also got a bi-directional data exchange with the Virginia Department of Health and the Division of Immunization, Immunization Information Systems. Basically, what this is, is now all of the immunizations from our students will automatically come from the BIF into our electronic health record. So the nurses no longer have to manually put those in. And then, of course, we got COVID supplies per semester to include thermometers, pulse oximeters, and gloves. The other thing that we, the local health department, received a grant. We are receiving two outdoor AEDs with cabinets for the high schools to be near the sports where they play. And we have one outdoor AED with cabinets for the middle schools. So that's where we are with the school.
Thank you very much. This is Ivan and that shows us how the team is working, getting safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of questions, please, for your folks. I'm just curious, I was at my interview today. Should a student have an asthma attack and recover fully at school? Do we have a set procedure or would it vary so far as whether we still transport the student?
So each student comes with asthma action care plan. Okay, and there's a green zone, a yellow zone, and a red zone. And the nurse will assess which zone they're in and they will follow the orders from the physician on what to do.
Second question is related with regard to AEDs. Well, assuming that during the school day training personnel, you know, who's designated, are we very comfortable as well for the evenings, particularly in light of the grant funding AEDs that would be housed outside?
There is supposed to be, we've discussed that before. And we, anybody can pretty much use an AED. And we, the coaches should be trained, they're CPR, first aid, so somebody should be able to use those. Especially if the kids are trained now in, in high school, so.
Are they the type that talk to you when you go up?
Yeah, absolutely.
Over the counter medications, I'm just curious, are we talking largely, just broadly? I know you don't have the data on top of your head. I'm, I'm assuming pain meds, like for slight headache, that's, what sort of, what were the counter medicines?
So. Yeah, we, we do ibuprofen, Tylenol.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Also, Tanya was instrumental in securing someone from the community service board to do the North, the North Hand training. The administrators doing the treating, that was very informative.
So the school nurses have now been trained for the North Hand along with the assistants, the administrators. The North Hand policy, I will send to brother, that's pretty much completed, to put on four docs. And then we, I've already received two North Hand sprays per school. And we, and I have the standing order from the health commissioner.
And all the principal and assistant nurses?
Yeah, have been trained. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Okay, next slide. Elementary alternative education proposal.
Okay, I sent the proposal to all board members. Now let's go to the end this with me. So in our budget, we had in there, because once we looked at our needs assessment, we needed, based on the number of suspensions of elementary students that were happening last year. And if you look at the numbers that I have in this document, you'll see that we had a major, major increase in out-of-school suspensions from 2021 to 2022. We decided that we needed to have an alternative to sustaining kids out of school for nonviolent behaviors. But we, and they're disrupting the instruction in the classroom, the learning environment, for the nonviolent behaviors. So we got together, the planning team, and you can see the people that were on the planning team. And we talked about what can we do, where can we, we, we thought about having one classroom where we can, almost like a high school alternative yet. But then we realized that if you have kids from Shinkitik that need to go into an alternative classroom and you, it's, and if we only put, if we put that class at Pumpkinhead or if we put that class at Akamak, you have kids in Shinkitik, it's too far for them to have to go. So we decided that we would look around and see what we could move around. And we did come up with, we could have two classes, one at the northern end and that would be at Kedetank, and one at the southern end. But I'm getting myself on this a little bit because I do want to stress the data here. So on top of the increase in our, our data, out-of-school suspensions, and a lot of that was because our elementary kids were saying, I'm going to hurt you, I'm going to shoot you. I mean, we know from, what is that, school, that it could happen. But they had a full threat assessment and they were suspended from school for making those kinds of threats for three days or more. And we had lots of those that came about. So what we did, we looked at all the data for, but then we also went back and we looked at our SOL data and our preliminary accreditation data. And as you can see, we had two out of five elementary schools were in the red for attendance, which means they're cute. If that had been something that counted for them to fail, they would have failed just because of their attendance, because they were in the red. And we had two out of five were in the yellow for attendance. And only one out of five was in the green. So we realized that not only was the discipline playing a part in our numbers of choice, our attendance, but also the kids being out of school, kids being home for whatever reason or another. So as I said, we came together with the committee to look at, okay, what can we do to make things better? Always look at your needs and then come up with something you could do to make it better. So we came up with the, the alternative to sustaining program. One goal of it was to decrease the number of out-of-school suspensions for elementary students while maintaining a healthy and safe learning environment. Another goal of the program is to ignore the chronic absenteeism, school quality indicator in each school's accreditation detail report, which is also on the school report card. And the final goal of the program would be to decrease the disconnect of academic learning support for students who have exhibited nonviolent behaviors. So the overview of the program, a program would be set up at Kedetank Elementary School. Another program would be set up at Akamak Elementary School. We look for where we had space that we could put these two programs, one at the north and one at the south. So the Kedetank program would serve Kedetank Elementary students, Shinkitik Elementary students, Amherstomkin Elementary students. And then the Akamak program would serve Akamak students, Pumpkinhead students, Amherstomkin students. The Tompkins would go either way depending on how many students are in the program. And as you said, and as you see, we said that we wanted to keep the classes under 12 with one certified teacher in each classroom and an assistant in each classroom. There would be no disruption in the students or the parents, because transportation would be provided. The side is with our high school, the kids would be picked up from home. The kids would be brought to their home school. They would be more accredited by their home school. And then they would get on a bus and they would go to their ATS classroom at the other school. Mr. Robinson was in on the meeting, he said that this would work. Because all it means is that you're gonna have a student, say for instance, and I'm just gonna use the name, Bobby Walker, who teaches, I mean, who drives for Pumka-Tik or who drove for Pumka-Tik. But he also works at Akimak. So once he drops his kids off at Pumka-Tik, he's gonna take the ATS kids from Pumka-Tik up to Akimak and drop them off. So there's no disruption and the parents don't have to bring up the school. They're gonna come to school at the regular time, get on the bus at the regular time. They're gonna come to the classrooms, they're gonna leave in the afternoon, probably a little bit earlier, because the driver has to get back and pick up their students. They're gonna get breakfast, just like our kids would get, they would get lunch. It's a real structure, it's gonna be a very structured environment. They will not move out of that classroom all day long. They will be monitored. If they have to go to the bathroom, someone's gonna take them to escort them to the bathroom. So this is how we're going to, we're proposing the classroom would be. So some of the other things that, if a student's behavior is inappropriate in the classroom, then they're gonna finish their suspension out of school. Parent conferences are gonna be required when the student returns to their home school. And the second time that the student is recommended for the ATS replacement, a parent conference is gonna be required, and we're gonna also look at implementing a behavior intervention plan for that student. Parents will have a choice. They might not want their child to go to have a change of placement. They might just say, I'll take three, five, ten days suspension. I'm not gonna let my child go to, I'm in Shinkitik, I don't want my child to go to Kepi-Tank for three days, five days, or whatever the suspensions are. That's their option. If they don't want to take advantage of it, then their child would be, do the suspension at home. Doing the classroom, the good thing we have, we're gonna have certified teachers in the classroom. So that instruction, there's a disconnect. Those teachers, all the little students will come with packets and they will be correlating with the, collaborating with their homeroom teacher. That teacher can teach them also. They're not just there as a babysitter. They will be able to help them with new assignments that they have, and they will be able to keep the learning environment going in the classroom. So this is the proposal that we have. The main thing is to keep kids in school, cut down on their attendance and absenteeism. And hopefully, it will help, with all those things together, it will help close the achievement gap and improve for our students in elementary. I, I was talking to someone about the, you know, thinking about this and proposing. And they said, no, there's only a couple of class, schools in the state of Virginia that they knew of that were doing something like this. I was like, wow, that's good, new group, Mavericks with pioneers on something like this. So I don't know, we don't know how it's gonna work, because this is the first time, we've never done it before. But it looks like it's a win-win situation for everybody.
I got a question. So just saying, you got your first section already skipped. Then in the middle of the week, all of a sudden you want the principal to send us somebody else? Are they gonna come in another week or are they be joining the students there already? I mean, are you gonna stagger them or?
They will come in, as they get suspended, they will come in.
Up to twelve, right?
Up to twelve. But the receiving school, like Mr. Thompson noticed that he's gonna have to stay in close contact with Dr. Patterson and Ms. Field, and the same thing with Ms. Smith. Because they have to have that communication. And they're gonna be monitoring the classroom, I mean, that was gonna be monitored, we're gonna be monitoring because we want to make sure this is successful. But if these kids are not doing what they're supposed to do, they cannot disrupt that environment also. This is an environment that they're going to keep from being home with no supervision. Mom doesn't have to take off work to stay home with them, or mom doesn't have to get a babysitter, or, you know, any of these things, these are things that will help the parents as well as help the students.
Any other questions? I think this is a great idea. It's really an opportunity for students to continue their education. But I think this is a good idea, so can I have a motion to approve? Motion, we can solve.
The one fifty-eight and the four thirty-seven, are those incidences or are those students?
The, these are students that were suspended last year. We had a hundred and fifty on last year.
Often suspensions, these were students.
Right, that were suspended. And we had a hundred and fifty-eight students suspended, out-of-school suspended in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. That went to four hundred and thirty-seven, I have the data.
It would be interesting to see what it was the year before, because this twenty-one, twenty-two, that was a hybrid year, wasn't it? Where the kids just went, there was. In twenty-one?
Twenty-one, twenty-two. A lot of things made a difference last year I have never seen. That's why we decided that we needed this, we have never seen them now. I mean, you guys suspended a student in elementary school and we couldn't figure that. We had never done that before. And we were seeing it all year long.
I thought they said this was seen now.
Yes, it is national. So we had to do something about it, because I think eventually it is gonna majorly, it's impacting our scores now, but we have growth that is helping our scores to stay up. Eventually, we're not gonna have that growth. So we got to do something to keep our kids in school, but not disrupt their kids and try to teach them a lesson or let parents. And this is one of the things that I'm gonna talk to clergy next week about, is talking to the parents about their kids and how they can help us in the apartment, in education. And these are the things that we want to do. We're showing them that we're trying to do everything we can do to help you, but you gotta help us also. No, I didn't, we, mental health counselors will be going, they will be scheduled to go every day. Dr. Johnson asked a question about the curriculum, and I did see, we have, we got the curriculum. We have not sat down, we have a meeting with the mental health counselors on the, is it the twenty-nine? The twenty-eight, we have a meeting with them and they will, we will talk about the curriculum, what they're gonna talk about. But they will be in there every day as we have started having them to go to reconnect every day to me.
All right, one last question. So if this is successful, and are y'all gonna try to move it up to the high school? Because I know, I mean, because some of the, I admit it, some of the students come here, it's, we shouldn't be doing it, but I was just wondering, if it's successful, will y'all try to move it up?
We will bring the data back to you, and if it's successful, then you can say, okay, you guys have a program for moving it to the high school. So we will look at that. But we, it's, we have a program similar to this in the, the middle school. So we thought, okay, we have alternative program for the high school, we have one for the middle school, and now we need one for the elementary school. And in the middle, it's similar things. These are kids that are doing nonviolent things, just being disruptive, just being kids and whatever. And they, they don't do things that need to be, they need to be suspended out of school. But in the elementary, if you don't have an ISS, it works for just, it's just like a band-aid on something. It's supposed to be doing this for short, very minor things, so. But along with your saying before you vote on this, or you make a motion, Della is gonna share with you our plans for the high school alternative ed this year also.
Good evening, everyone. So going with the lines of alternative ed, we had a school. The proposal tonight is for us to move our current alternative ed program, which is in the mobile unit next to the reconnect program. Currently, we've asked for it to be at Arcadia High School to serve our alternative ed students. And it will be the same thing that Dr. Hall was saying, they will ride the buses to go to Arcadia High School. And they will be there in a classroom that we have found space for them with a certified teacher and an aide for them as well. A lot of this comes from the, being able to serve their needs, like for the special ed population. If the students with disabilities need to have gym, there's a gym. We can meet their needs with that and also trying to keep those students who are at the alternative ed on track with their peers, because they're not traditionally, may not be suspended from school. They just need a smaller placement. So we're proposing to remove them from the all-ed trailer down here at Akimak and have them at Arcadia High School to start this school year. And possibly moving it up to have each school have their own on-site alternative ed. So for example, a Shinkitik student does not have to come from the island, from Shinkitik to go to the alternative ed at Arcadia. Eventually, it's, you know, teachers, the teacher of alternative ed at all the sites of all three schools to have their own built-in alternative ed programs and the, try to have a blended model of learning perhaps, like where they can be still in their alternative ed classroom and perhaps maybe listen to, who we, listen to a traditional content teacher that serves all content, because they still are gonna be having to take their SOLs. So instead of us having them on the computer-based program, it would be more blended for them to have the same teachers and have the content coming to them through a classroom, teachers can teach it to prepare them for SOLs so that they can still graduate on time if that is the case. So that's what we are proposing for this school year. Space has been found, we do have a new teacher, since Mr. Purnell has retired. So far, the students who will be there, I know it's gonna be about three, and they're from that school. So they would do the same thing, get to ride the bus to the high school, go to their classroom that would have the designated space that would keep them from the general population. But everything they need would be right there housed where they need. Area-wise, you, restroom, cafeteria, and the gym is right there. So that is also the proposal tonight, just to relocate them from the mobile unit here and house them in Arcadia with hopes of probably moving on additional school year.
So where they are now, they're, they're totally separate. And I understand, I mean, when they're in the trailer, they're completely separate from their peers. So how will they still remain separate? I hear you saying they're gonna use the gym and be riding the bus by themselves.
Well, they ride with their peers now.
Oh, they do.
And where Mr. O'Shea has talked about, that class is right beside the gym. So they're really not even in the school, they're in the gym right by the cafeteria. The only kids that we have in alternative ed right now is about three, and they're all our AED students. They're not from other schools.
And then, will they eat lunch with their peers?
They will eat lunch in the alternative ed classroom. The only thing they might have to do is if they're what, ninth and tenth grade or tenth and eleventh, they, they, we are, we are out of compliance. This is one of the reasons. Tenth and back of the grade, or ninth and tenth graders are supposed to have physical ed. We, they don't, we can't give them physical ed when they're there. Also, special ed students are supposed to have physical ed. And so we do have periodically, we have some special ed students that go to alternative ed. We are not giving them PE. So this will solve some of that out-of-compliance that is also, is we have them housed in a building. And if you remember, a long time ago, we had an alternative ed program in buildings.
And then, there, there's three now, but how many is there initially?
We tend to run no more than ten or seven, it depends by the year. And then some of the students go back after, because they're not long-term suspended, like they don't come to the board. So we try to maybe do them for a quarter and then they go back to their home school. So it's never no more than ten, ten or eleven.
Any other questions?
So the elementary, going back to that, the, those students will be going, will they have, I guess, a class together at these schools as well?
They won't, any, it's not, they're gonna stay in that classroom. We wanna make it so that they don't wanna ever come back to that classroom again. So yes, because remember, these kids have, really, the alternative ed kids are kids who just don't do well with large groups and everything. But these kids are kids who have really been constantly disrupting things like that. They might have gotten in a fight, nobody got hurt or anything like that. And they could be suspended, but we're not gonna suspend them, we're gonna put them in an alternative.
Any other question? All right, do I have a motion to approve the proposal that has been submitted to us?
We're gonna do two, a couple of, or one final, one thought?
I'll take a couple together.
All right, a motion that we go forward with to do alternative programs, elementary and high school.
Is it moving in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Most cares. Thank you very much for the full explanation of what we are representing.
Our next item, Sheriff Russell is tied up with some immigration stuff. And he called me about an hour ago and said, I'm sorry, I can't make the meeting. I have people here from out of town with this immigration thing, that he's doing an investigation. So he's not gonna be here tonight for that, so we're not gonna do that. If you look at the MOU, there's nothing different. Except we, yeah, we just changed it, so we can just, if you agree with just that change that we made, because we just, it just, we're not gonna give them, we can't give them a locker and all that kind of stuff. And he said he didn't need, they didn't need that anyway, because they would not ever keep contact in, in a school or anything like that. So he said he was all fine, he just couldn't be here tonight.
So they don't have a locker now?
No, we don't. The only thing, we, we wanted to get them a computer though, and we did have that, and we did a lobby, and Della and I met, and we talked about that. You know, just for them to have a locker, things like that. But no, they don't have a space or a locker, a lot of content.
And the cameras, they're still, what is this, they're not allowed to see the cameras anymore?
No, we didn't, we definitely didn't see the cameras, I thought we had a computer.
It's undermined, that's what I'm asking, with the ability to view the cameras.
Underlined is this new language. It's right through these, but I'm taking out one.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
All right, a motion, we approve the updated Akimak County Sheriff Office, SRC, and MOU.
Second? It's moving in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, item eight point oh six, Mr. Bennett, something is up there.
Good evening. Before I start that, I just wanted to let everybody know how hard the custodians, ground people, maintenance guys are working this summer trying to get everything ready. It has been a daunting task. Our grounds guys are flattered right now, because I think we had the wettest July in a long time, and we're struggling. I assure Dr. Hall, by the time school starts, we will be caught up, we'll have everything looking good, and she's going to hold me back. So now, I kinda got, it's not anything fancy, it's just kinda goes through the projects and everything we got going on. We've got a number of paving projects. Arcadia High School was the last one that is still underway. They should finish tomorrow. Arcadia Middle School has been completed. Shinkitik's been done, we completed that. We did, Shinkitik had some handicap spaces, the handicap space that was there previously wasn't true handicap space, because the ramp went up to a doorway to where there was a step, so you couldn't get up there. So we did big handicap spaces that are adjacent to a ramp, so you can get out of the wheelchair. So that was done. And Newa High School was completed. And Kegetank Bus Lot is completed yesterday. I think the next slide will show, we even got a bus park there, the lines are striking. This is gonna be a big help to everybody at school, because last year, with that new parking lot being ravelled, any kind of rain, it was the best. You had all those little feet coming through there, and so my custodial sat there, it's probably happier than it is now. Happy to have that done. And Newa Greenhouse, we got the new greenhouse, or that's kind of a picture of the existing greenhouse, the condition is in. The next slide will show, this is the greenhouse that we put on, it was a thirty by forty, through green span. It's kind of like state-of-the-art greenhouse now, and it's gonna be a really nice greenhouse once we're done. We're probably thirteen weeks out on shipping, that's how far behind they are. I wonder if they might actually have time to start the work with their engineers on some of the stuff that we're doing there. We'll get that up, hopefully, have it up, ready to go by the first of the year. Next is Arcadia Track and Field. A lot of work going on up there, and we've got all the runways, and at this point, I think the next slide will show that they've been paved. We've still got some work to do on pole vault, which is the one on the right slide. We've got to do the landing pads in each one of those. Once we get these done, the next slide will show the high jump area that we haven't got paved yet. Paving that is gonna happen next week. Once we get those done, we're scheduled to get you the surfacing company to come in. We need a thirty to forty-five day cure time, they assured me that we had done this fall before they put the rubber surface down. When they come to do the rubber surface on the runways and that, and they'll re-surface the track as well, and re-line the track at Arcadia. So that way, we'll have all that. Still got some kind of big work to do on shop foot pads, discus pads, and something else, I'll think of it later. But we've got a lot of work to do up there, most of it, you know, we fully expect to have done this fall, where they get their, their host of the next spring, we'll have a new track and field facility up there that will probably be pretty nice. Where they get their uh their host of the next spring, we'll have a new track and field facility up there uh that will probably be pretty nice. Um the next one kinda goes, this is Arcadia as well. Uh all of the new field lights, musco field lights are in place now at Arcadia. And the next lot should show the finished lights are on the right right there. They're a lot different than what was there. We also did Nandua, this is the next slide. Uh there's kinda a picture of the old lights on the left hand side. And that's the old lights on the ground. The next slide will show the new lights. So you the old lights on the ground, the new lights installed. So you can see it's pretty significant difference. The next slide kinda goes through what we've accomplished there. Um you'll notice a number of reductions. Reductions in energy consumption, reduction in weight, reduction in wind load. And probably the most significant is an increase in light levels. It's gonna be about seventy five percent increase in light levels on those fields. So it's gonna really be a transformation because Nandua especially because there are a number of lights out there anyway. So we're seventy five percent brighter with LED lights. We also have got lights on poles. They're they're called ball illuminators. Actually, you you'll see them on the pole. We won't know anything, but when the ball is in the air up high, it illuminates a lot of the ball. This is something colleges and high schools are moving here now. Um professional stadiums have these things. A lot of colleges and high schools did. So now put it in place. It's uh just another feature. We kinda help some receivers downfield and it's gonna be pretty deep. I'm I'm excited. I've yet to see them at nighttime, so I'm I'm pretty excited to see what it looks like. I'm hoping that they're bright enough that we don't have to continue renting the lights that we rent every year to illuminate the dark areas in the parking lots and the and the uh and the field. So we'll see that. We'll we'll find out before our first games, just how light they are when we go from there. Uh next slide is uh Tangier combined metal roof project that we're gonna be doing over there. That work is scheduled to start. Um we're gonna try to start right early September. We've got a pre-construction meeting in this month. Materials have been ordered. Um they have kind of assured us that they'll have this project completed by Thanksgiving. So we're gonna do our best to keep them on task on this. Hope we don't have a lot of weather that hinders them. But we'll get that done and and Tangier will be a lead preschool. So uh I think next slide, therapeutic playgrounds. Originally when this came to be, it was only gonna be one therapeutic playground at Keggetank. Uh I've worked with Beth, I've worked with the company. We got about seventy thousand dollars in grant money from a grant application. And now we're gonna do three therapy playgrounds in Akamak County, Keggetank and the Tommy. Um the picture on the left is kind of some of the equipment, the old equipment that's sitting in these areas now. The uh the rendering on the right hand side kinda shows you what these will be and it's it's sensory type things. The round thing there is a a whirl thing. If you go to the next slide, I might have it on there. You can see that a child in a wheelchair can actually deal that and they can go around. It's also got a bench in it where their friends that may not be in a wheelchair can sit there with them as a teacher or somebody. Uh they can do that, kinda give them an opportunity for something similar to swings and and like merry go round type things. It that you know makes it important that they have something that they can get on as well with their wheelchair. Where they're not having to be taken out of the wheelchair all the time putting the swing or something like that. So we're hoping that you know that this is something that really benefits our children with some special needs and the parents. Uh on the right hand side is just an example. One of the beaches is is a child where they simply can go up to it. This is not only for children in wheelchairs, other parents that can go up to this thing. Everything's pretty much at ground level where they can sit or stand and and be on this and make use of it. I'm sure there's gonna be some teachers that say, why the heck did you do that? But and I think one more slide on that. But there are a number of things there and you know our goal is that we'll be forward to have this all over elementary schools um to meet that need. It's it's a need that's out there. It's real. We recognize that as we move forward. Uh this is uh we're gonna do Tangier Playground. Uh this was a bit challenging to the rest, just getting everything over there. Kind of a a drawing what we're gonna have. Up to date swings, lighting boards, some activity centers. On the right hand side, it's just the color selection that that Principal Rosati picked out. It's gripped tight, so it probably is big for Tangier. Uh kind of the color scheme. So hopefully we've got all that ordered. Um looking at like a late fall installation. Preventing a lot of weather and get materials over there and all that. So next, the metal detectors. This kinda you all approved the new metal detectors everywhere. This kinda gives you an idea of what we did. Uh we we worked with the preschools and schools. Now we ended up with six metal detectors at each of the high schools and the middle schools. So they've got full covers, put three at any time. We've got two at each of the elementary schools. Total thirty seven new metal detectors. Um each principal sent a list of everybody for school that will be like managing to catch something like that. Garrett has a virtual academy. So they're all, they should have, I forget what they Dr. Hall had a name. They're supposed to finish training and get their certificate before school starts. Um also, it's not a creative slide, but it's long here on security stuff. We also applied for a break for the state for a number of new security cameras, outdoor lighting and probably uh something Dr. Hall and Beth got to see a demo of is a mass notification system. That uh it's really kinda cutting edge, I think, and and if the grant application students will probably share more with that and as we move forward, but it would be a a good system to have for security and safety in our schools. Uh poachers, we're adding poachers at Arcadia that will go on each side of, oops, sorry. Uh each side of the existing poacher, we're gonna add about two hundred and five seats, I think I think you got it on the next slide. One of them will be handicap accessible. The previous slide, you had a ramp going off. There would be two spaces for wheelchairs there. The other side will be like this. So it's two hundred and five additional seats with four wheelchair spaces at Arcadia. Uh next slide is gonna be Nandua. Nandua poachers are really old uh out of compliance and a lot of things. So we're gonna do a complete demo there and the next slide kinda show, there's what we're gonna have in Nandua. It's adding nine hundred and fourteen seats with um nine wheelchair space. We'll have a handicap ramp on the one side, stairs off of them. But if you look at where the press box is, we've kinda been told that either the press box's spread not enough room for setting up. So we did a platform right here below the press box with full where cameras can be set on tripod and things like that. And it they kinda is gonna give them a little bit more room than they need. Uh now Brad, I'm just waiting it out. Okay. Uh this just goes through just some of the projects going on. Uh been completed and everything that aren't there. We put new LED lights in the gym at Shinkate High, Nandua High, Nandua Middle and Arcadia Middle School. We're planning to do Arcadia High School, but we gotta try to find some lamps that work there and we don't have anything for uh Arcadia High. We did a remodel of the hospital college area. Pungaty Bookroom remodel, Shinkate Elementary School, we added cooler. We're getting ready to build a trans tire stores building at the transportation, the bus garage. Uh materials arrived for that last week and scheduled this which is starting in a couple of weeks. New carpet, we just finished new carpet in uh Nandua Middle last week. We've got new walk-in coolers in Creeds and Combinator, Arcadia High, Pungaty, Nandua Gym, Painting. Uh working on schedule for that. Uh Akamak, we're gonna be painting hallways in the gym. Nandua, I will paint the second floor. And then uh Technology Building, Akamak Primary School renovation, Hogsheadford Gyms are all projects that kinda developing right now.
Great. Any other question?
Yeah.
Starting to.
The greenhouse in Nandua is thirty by forty. What, is that the same footprint as the previous one?
The one there now.
It's large.
Was large. Um but the the one that there is now, from my understanding, one section of it was hardly used. So what we've done is, and I worked with this this company, Greenspan, Quirkspan, worked with them. They're probably the leading company in the country that does high school greenhouses. And they looked at our population at at Nandua and things like that and built this. Not only can see bright side now, but right side in the future if we have to grow it and it's a red. And it's pretty standard size for a high school of the side of Nandua.
So I don't mind it. Well, is it gonna be paying back for our purpose? And what is our purpose with the greenhouse?
Yes, so right to initially get it started, we want to be able to utilize it into our environmental science, mostly for our college environmental science part. Um that's one of the things that the college community have had and they utilize it. And at some point, we I really would like to bring back some more agricultural trade industry programs again. We had the trade industry, uh agriculture program several years ago and that's where we retired, kind of retired program. So we would like to at some point bring back something with agriculture, agriculture again. Um I know there's some some community members are questioning too about that. And that would be, and that's where we had it, is where I'd like to bring it back into a nice greenhouse facility, not the that family. It doesn't need to be the conference we have as well.
All right, question. Why you didn't just fill new stadium, uh new seats for Arcadia? I mean you could have both both schools at the same entrance, so why didn't that?
Why didn't Arcadia have?
Why didn't Arcadia get the same stadium seats as Nandua?
Cause Nandua seems like they have nine hundred and fourteen, I think you said.
Yeah.
Uh Arcadia has seven and.
And we're adding two hundred and five.
So it's gonna be about nine hundred?
Yeah.
Okay, you added additional.
Yeah, we're adding additional two hundred. The existing is staying there, we're adding to them. Those, those are old as well, so we couldn't directly connect to them. And I remember Principal O'Shea on this, there's gonna be some separation between them, but it'll add two hundred, hundred and some on each side.
So the question is, why you just didn't?
I can't really answer that question because it was put in the budget like this before I ever got here. So that's kinda how it all went down.
Cause it cause it kinda makes it.
That was what was in the carryover budget that came from.
Right.
Or bomb commencement. And and actually, we did go over on both projects and we took money to other projects we went on. Uh so we we actually did go over on both projects, but it was working with our capital improvement plan that has been. And that was what was originally in that.
Was this before me?
Must have been. Capital improvement plan was typically done every year and given to the county, so.
Cause I don't remember. The person I don't remember ever hearing about they uh say, other than that they are old. That's all I've heard the whole time I've been here.
And it's been in there uh in our C I P. Are you satisfied?
No, I'm not satisfied, but.
But we have some expressions.
Um as far as the track goes, um has there been a like grading plan? My concern is, I guess, once this is all said and done, I know the souls of it are hurt the best, that once it's all said and done, how the water is is it gonna be pounding in any of that way? Are we gonna do some kind of grading plan to get that water so it's not like during the, you know, our spring season? When I guess they're gonna be starting or in the midst of that, you know, going.
Well, everything with wood is above grade. So I mean, you know, the runways and stuff like that, they're above grade.
Correct.
And the drainage is away from the runways. The water's gonna go away from them. The water between them is gonna go away and they go down.
I just don't think they kinda swale, but it makes a slight swell or anything or if they've been done.
We're using the contour of the terrain that's already there, but raising everything up so we don't have pounding, we don't have water standing. The the runways and the high jump pads, stuff like that are real critical elevations where there can't be pounding or things like that for the track surface to go on.
But there's some of them, when I was out there the other week, it seemed like they were a little high. Then if somebody was running down and they just stopped the track there, but um at one point, one area looked like it's about a foot high off of the existing grave, maybe eight inches, you know, but it's still significant that they could stop. I'm just.
It's it's tough to look at something that's under construction. We're not even close to done.
I said if there's a grading plan, once you're done.
We got graded. Actually, we've got graded once we're done, but we're gonna grade it once we get all the pavement and everything to make sure that we don't create a problem for the next.
Exactly. Okay.
Yeah, it's it's a.
I know it's a work in progress. I know it's not completely.
Yeah, it's.
Something I just wanna make sure we have fore- foresight on that, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other question?
Just about the tracks, uh the the rubberized track at Arcadia. I understood that that was more, shall we say, delicate than the other tracks because it was rubberized. And I remember when we got those, there was a lot of talk about people aren't gonna be able to, you know, we don't want the kids walking on those with their football cleats and we can't have cars driving on it. And and I guess I'm just, as we're spending all this money again on this track that was very expensive to begin with, I'm wondering if there is a plan to maintain it so it doesn't, we don't have, we're constantly repairs every other year.
Really what we're doing now is something that should have been done already. They they recommend to be resurfaced those type of rubber tracks every three to five years. The the elements, just the environment, a lot of breaks it down. And so I mean, it's it's just a routine maintenance thing, redoing, getting lines, repainting. You can stretch it out and we're stretching it out. I think now that facility is what, seven years old? It makes me feel weak. And I don't really know, but I know that, you know, we need.
And then and the grass cutters are there.
Yeah, the grass.
They they know not to.
Well, the grass cutters know that we're we're spraying the edges of the track inside and outside. They're not weeding up against the rubber and things like that. It just can't happen to them. So yeah, and it'll be an education process the same way on the runways. And it will be weed, cause they're gonna have the same rubber surface on the front, the asphalt will be the same rubber surface. So they'll they'll be educated on what they do around those as well. But yeah, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna do our best to maintain them to get as long a life out as we can. Cause you know, now we're gonna be looking at not only the track, but resurface again. You know, five six years down the road, we'll also have runways and paths and I guess it'll have to be resurfaced in the future as well, reline.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. I know we all have been very active, very busy, but these last few months, the summer has been overwhelming. But we do thank you and thank you.
What song are you doing? Evening, we had a song.
Then wait for this.
All right, next item is.
Okay, I have a few things, but before um I give some FYIs. Peter Harris is here because uh earlier we talked about our safety plan. And part of our safety plan was to install a visitor management system. And so Peter's here just to quickly go over what that looks like. So in case you get questions from parents or people coming in the building, you have some idea of what our visitor management system is.
Good evening, board members. I'm here tonight on behalf of the A C P S Technology Department to present information for the Raptor Visitor Management System. The Raptor V M S will be implemented in all Akamak County Public Schools in the upcoming school year moving forward. Raptor is an online management system used to track visitors. It does sex offender checks across all fifty states. In addition, it has the ability to send automated emails to text, emails and texts to principals, S R Os, assistant principals as well. The system tracks who is in our building, buildings, where they are going and when they leave. Raptor screens and tracks three hundred and fifty thousand visitors every school day, sends one hundred and fifty custom alerts every school day and flags seventy five sex offenders every school day. In addition, Raptor also monitors student attendance, tardies, manages and tracks drills and connects to first responders in the event of a crisis with its reunification system. We plan on implementing the student attendance feature by the second semester. No other visitor data or information is gathered or recorded and the data or information is not shared with any agency outside of A C P S. The Raptor hardware consists of a dynamo label writer, Raptor scanner and kiosk station. The self-service kiosk stations will be located in each school's vestibule. The kiosks is used to sign in first time visitors, contractors and volunteers. It is also used to sign in and sign out staff and students when implemented. Visitors will still have to come to the main office to receive their badge once cleared. Visitors will have three ways to sign in. They will scan their I D by gently dropping it in the reader. We have a quick find feature for returning visitors and we have manual entry for those I Ds that will not fit into the reader. Some documents that cannot fit into the reader would be like passports, um large papers that there are, you know, large documents some of our parents come with. And once it's confirmed, uh we can actually check that it's an official document so they won't have to go through the process of registering that item yet. Raptor also has a delayed entry and batch processing feature. The delayed entry is a feature of the system for when the network goes down and we have to go back to paper and pencil. The uh the entry admin will collect the I Ds as normal, get the correct information and enter retroactively later. Batch printing will allow for a large number of visitors all expected at the same time for scheduled events such as open house, eat lunch with your child, um or any grandparent's day or Michael's for miles to point out. Users can add a batch to the V M S. It will do a live sex offender check and print all the labels in A B C order as long as the users have the list prior to the event. If someone appears, oh next, sorry. If someone appears as a sex offender, it will display possible offender alert. display possible offender alert. The system does check aliases as well. There could be more than one possible match. All front office staff have been trained on how to respond to these alerts. Everyone has been trained to act at the level of decorum that does not affect, does not offend the person standing in front of them. Faces do not need to show shock or dismay. We do not know the circumstances around this alert. There are cases where people have been falsely accused, charged, and prosecuted. We must also allow for human and technical errors, we are not here to pass judgment. If confirmed, confirmed an offender, office staff will simply say, please have a seat, someone will be right with you. Administrators and SROs will have received that alert by then, and they will take it from there. If no alerts are found, the user can print the badge, that will show the visitor has been cleared. As you see in the picture, I was in two locations, and it shows the date, the time, my name, and where I was going. It, and it tracks the location, and unfortunately, I did not sign out in one location, so by the time I went to another school, it made them aware that I was still currently signing in another building. My fault. The system does accord across all schools, which is helpful for parents who have students in elementary, middle, and high. The deployment of the hardware has started, and you will see them on all the front office staff desks. There is also a public notification letter that will be included in the open house back-to-school documents, as well as signs for the front entrance. Um, our hope is that when the public notification letter goes out, that is an opportunity for all family members to discuss this with their family members, who may have, um, are, are registered as offender, um, to save someone from embarrassment for coming into school. Um, this only applies if they are visiting our buildings, walking through, you are dropping off, um, lunches or things like that, it does not apply, but once you're entering our buildings, that's when this system goes in place. And all schools have a sign like this, that will be on the front door, to make them aware. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
What's the cost to the division for this?
I would like to tell you I have the answer, and I do, but I'm gonna leave that for someone who makes a little bit more money than I do. I would rather answer that. I would like to use that for my supervisor, the finance department.
Jack, well, that did give a grand, and he did present, and I don't recall what it was, but it was all part of when they presented all the things.
That's long, but not the number one. The second question is, um, so I thought already you said this would be for students to come in and get badges, this being every day event when they come to school?
This is only right now, we're doing visits. Um, the student portion of it, we are trying to get in place by the second semester. Um, I think we're probably happy about this, because it does track tardies. Um, they still, if this is someone coming in late, so you can go up to the kiosk and go to the front office, they can scan, it will do time check, all reports show when the student came in, um, if they went to, um, another, another location, but this part is, um, something that we haven't started yet, so I don't know all the details behind it, I'm basically trained right now on just the visitors.
Cause I'm curious, there's, um, you know, when the school doors open, it takes time for all the kids to get where they need to go, it seems like it would add time to it.
It's only for if they're coming in tardy, and that's an issue that they had with attendance, because we had some major issues this year where parents would say, my daughter's coming in tardy, and the school would have them tardy for ten, fifteen days or something like that. So this way, if they come in tardy and they don't come to the office, they already are standing, and the office will already know, it's already documented.
Okay, I can do those all the questions.
More details to come.
Any more questions?
So, if I'm gonna go visit a school, I need to have my ID with me, and then this machine's gonna be in the vestibule, and it's gonna scan my ID to locations, vestibule for quick, uh, self-service, there are, um, there's a Raptor scanner, and a label maker on the
front office desk. Um, and the public letter basically is the guide explaining how this works, you will only have to do this registration process the first time, which will check those sex offender registry. After that, when you want to come and visit a building, you'll walk into the vestibule, um, the entry admin will get alerted that someone is at the vestibule, and we will actually see who it is. When you scan your ID, if you've already been cleared the first time, you will be able to key in where you wanna go, um, and once you scan your badge and you're once cleared, you can go into the front office and get your sticker. You still have to check in with...
So you scan and then get it done?
Yes, that's for the self-service of, to cut down congestion also.
Okay. And what, so, and we're just scanning for sex offenders, but if they're, if they're murderers?
That's okay. Right now, we're the sex offenders, we'll let them have, if the authorities have, um, we have, we have some alerts, the custom alerts, which will be, if they're a protective...
I'm gonna vote for the, uh, custom alerts.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's a good question.
Yes. Uh, if we have a protective order against a parent, that is the other portion of it. The local school list also, a counselor can have, say, here's a protective order, he cannot come in the building, he or she cannot come in the building for whatever crime. Uh, this also can be keyed into the system. The only difference is the sex offender alerts are red, and the custom alerts are blue. This would save, um, entry admin from getting up, going to the records room, or having the counselor go look, once these documents are uploaded in that portion of it, they can see, and the details can be added in that custom alert, not allowed on premises due to A B or C. Um, but once again, uh, this right now is just checking for sex offenders or local schools denial list right now. It's very early on, we're, we're blessed to get it up and running right now, I was just happy to see a visitor badge printed, to see that it's working. Every school has their desk, it's a baby step right now, and thankful the doors are the extra layer of security to work alongside this.
Go ahead.
I got three questions. One, what is the security department have that employee cannot go and search if they know somebody they know, and they want to search this friend and all that? What's keeping y'all happy so they can't do that?
The only, the only way to do the search is if the visitor comes in the building and puts their ID in, there is a manual entry, but we are, our front office staff has been trained well, I mean, you will see that what they do, that's the whole purpose of this program. You, well, the board office actually will have logins too, so they can tell who's in the building, what someone's doing, everything is tied to that user's login. I mean, we already, you know, I'm saying we, because part of me is still at the best sometimes, we already have had programs such as Paris School, where you could actually do wrong things with, um, other than this system. I mean, we are all trained on how we're supposed to act at that desk, and what we're supposed to do, and know that it can be tracked.
All right. The second question is, when they come there for sports, have the parents of them come there, there's usually a multiple ones, or even, everyone's gonna get scanned?
The, right now, this is for the daytime hours, when the front office admin is there. Um, we haven't got all the details yet, we're just, like I said, just starting with this. There are some, um, there's some feedback that each secretary, uh, provided me that I've shared with our technology department. There are things that we're still gonna have to follow, but ask about how do you want the building to handle open house? Uh, do you wanna do paper and pen, um, with this many people? Um, you know, like I said, we still have cakes to work out. I'm, I really don't have all the answers just yet, but I will say that has come up, like, how are we gonna do afternoon events? You know, after hours, I mean, you're going outside to the field, or if you're doing something at, at night after five, six o'clock, I mean, you have an SRO there.
Yeah, that's, that's, I would just somebody that's doing the day, using sports, or using their, like, basketball, they have like two, three o'clock, use about one or two, so that's the one I was talking about.
We're gonna have to, to talk about that, and see how each bill, or how they want each bill to handle that. Yes.
And three, so you're saying, once you get scanned, it's gonna be in the system, so you just hit the text pad and say return your student, and it will put your badge?
Student or visitor?
Visitor.
Visitor, once you come into the building for the first time, I walk into Arcadia, I am here to see Mr. O'Shea. It's your first time coming, and you're visiting that building, actually going in that building somewhere, you're gonna have to give your government-issue ID, whatever you have, um, she will do, he or she will do the, uh, the process where we drop your ID in the scanner, it's gonna run a check real quick, you come back cleared, they're gonna get your visitor's badge, of course, we're gonna check with the principal to make sure that you have a scheduled appointment. Once you're cleared, you come out of that registry okay, there's your sticker. And then you go ahead, it has all those details on it, and then later in the day, you know, if you wanna go back and look and see who's in your building, they have the ability to run those reports, and it's a photo ID, not pretty photo IDs in there so far, cause we've had to test it, but everybody's photo ID, birthdate, the whole works, is in that system.
So it does read your driver's license?
What it does is...
Is that gonna be the main thing?
It reads the back to get the, it's the machine regal zone, where it gives your date of birth, your name, everything, yes. That is the confusion also, that people are thinking that that's the part that does the sex offender check. No, that part just reads the data off of it to bring it on the screen to show your face and your name. Not until you hit submit and print, where it drops that ID in the reader, that's what does the sex offender check.
Okay, but will your stuff come up on the screen so you can see all your...
I would have to test, that's why you saw...
I mean, the person?
Oh, yes. Yes, that's why there was a blue sticker over my face on that visitor's badge. Yeah, oh, yes. You get to see those lovely photos of those drivers' license stickers. If you log into the system now, you'll see each one of the tags that's tested in each building, this, they're, we're not happy with that.
I was just gonna ask about students who've been suspended, who try to come back to school when they're not supposed to be there, um, well, they're coming late, I guess, they try to sneak in late, will the machine pick that up?
We're not there yet, because that's the student side of the visitor management system. That's later, I have to learn what's gonna happen with all of those parts as well.
Yes, and one thing I see that, with the label writer, do we have extras? Cause I'm sure, back, I'm gonna back, you know, fail or whatever, will we have extra label writers, so if something happens at that school?
I'm sure they're, I'm sure they will, but I've been using pretty, so far, they're pretty good, but I'm sure that's already there, I can't speak for what's been ordered yet, uh, but I'm sure we will.
We always do this, like, the receipt issue, next door, so...
I got one last one.
You're okay.
Once you're finished, do y'all have a trash can door for you to throw them away? Cause you know, some people will try to copy them no matter what.
Well, once you're done, first you gotta go back to the office and get signed out, um, and, which I did not do at one point. Um, and once you get signed out, you know, there were, you know, most people are gonna walk out with it on them, you know, we hope. Uh, the only thing that's on there is your face, um, the school, the time, and where you go, nothing else, no other, uh, personally identifiable information like date of birth, any of that stuff, nothing can be used on that badge that someone could do something with, um, to, to, you know, message your information.
All right, well, thank you, this is a great first start.
I'm excited.
You know, we're really, really moving up.
Yes, we are. Wish ahead.
I'm looking forward to the future. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, you're welcome.
The other things that I had was, um, I had a very successful Tandu visit, met with parents and, um, teachers and Mayor, talked about some things, um, I brought back some information, asked Bobby some questions, because his question asked of me about the school being used as a shelter. And, um, so he got the C-ray, and C-ray gave us the information of why the school couldn't be used as a shelter, and I forwarded that information to the Mayor and the parent advisory group over there, and, um, and it was because of the winds, hurricane winds and everything like that, it would not be safe to use a school as a shelter. Um, I have, Karen and I met, made with Lars and the Virginia Sports, Sports, State Sports, boy, over at, um, NASA, and that was very interesting, we met with, um, the community college, um, vice president was there with us also, so looking forward to our partnership with them, with STEM, and with some of our students being able to do internships and externships, and they want lots for our kids, even elementary kids to come to field trips, they wanna come in and talk to our kids, so that was a very good, um, meeting there. Um, I hope you're very senior, is Dr. LaBelle Brown, I gave you, uh, gave you his book that all the administrators had. He is, uh, world renowned, he's just been CNN a couple of weeks ago, but, um, he has a really good message, and he's gonna be our weekend speaker, who's been booked since February, um, become, that's how far in advance you have to book if you want someone that can become. So, um, other than that, I don't, we're gonna have each our interviews, um, hopefully, um, we will have one on the twenty-fifth, and you guys can decide, we have two members of the board on that committee, so that's all that I...
Could I have a motion to go into the closed session?
Forward, little journey to close meeting, as allowed by section two point two dash three seven one, Code of Virginia, subsection eight one, personnel, subsection eight two, student matters, and subsection eight seven, legal.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried.